Shanae, do we have any organizational service announcements?
I'm not ready.
All right. At this moment, please stand for our invocation. The invocation is given by Dr. Ismael Pastor of House of God Ministries, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the invitation. Miss Father Hanson. Heavenly Father, today we want to recognize who you are. God of heaven and earth, we humble ourselves before you. We pray for forgiveness and for healing in our land. We're so thankful for peace, for love, and protection. We're so grateful for the country that has given us, and we honor it. Father, we also pray for this community of Irving, Texas, who is in a lot of ways struggling in their finances, marriage, with difficult issues with their childrens. Almighty God, we pray for victory upon these areas in our community and for our neighbors. Give us unity and rational reconciliation in our city of Irving, Texas, which is a great city to live in. And we also pray for our country. Father God, would you continue to bring unity upon all religious groups in the country, movements, businesses, especially in our city, so that you might work together for our common good? We pray for wisdom in national and our community level. We pray for our leaders. We pray for our military forces who are in battle as we speak today. We pray for President Obama, for Congress, and for Senate. Always lead this great nation for your purpose. Finally, dear God, we also pray for leadership of this city of Irving. I pray for mayor, city manager, city council. Please guide them to lead the people. You have place here in Irving, Texas. We ask that in Christ's name.
Amen.
We're very proud this evening to have Girl Scout Group 64-60 and Radiant STEM Academy students lead us in the pledge. We have Huda Spade, Sophia High, Marion Albatina, Sarah Albatina, and Anna Yusin.
Girl Scouts, attention. Girl Scouts advance. Girl Scouts, prepare to honor the flag of America. Girl Scouts, honor the flag of America. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin.
For the religion, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love you, Beth. I'm going to ask members of the Housing and Human Services Board, Steve Reed, and the Director of the Planning and Community Development to come and join me on the stage. You guys hang it out in the back. This week's proclamation to read today is the Community Development Lock Grant Program, which was enacted into law by President Gerald Ford in 1974, provides local governments with financial resources to address diverse housing and community development needs. The CDVG program has been administered by the City of Irving since 1999 and has positively impacted the city and its citizens through providing housing and infrastructure improvements, social service partnerships, and quality of life accomplishments. The CDVG program addresses prioritized needs as identified through citizen input and seeks solutions through private and public partnerships. Over the past 15 years, our community has leveraged over $34 million in CDVG funds to provide significant results and accomplishments. Now therefore I, Beth Van Dyne, there in the city of Irving, Texas, would hereby proclaim the week of April 6th to the 11th as Community Development Week, Irving, Texas.
I'd like to introduce the Chairman of our Housing and Human Services Board, Mr. Marquette Stevenson. Would you like to say a couple words?
Good evening. On behalf of the members of the Board of Housing and Human Services, I accept this honor. Thank you. We do have an Assistant Director and one of our members.
Some of us are a little heightened there.
The Department of Planning and Community Development has been receiving the CDVG grants since 1999. And through those efforts and those funding we did, they were able to leverage that and get some of the good work that a lot of the different nonprofit agencies do in the city of Irving. So this is really a celebration of that teamwork and helping the other people in the city. So we appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Officer Montoya. I'm a new member, the Board of Directors. And it's been a pleasure and an honor for me to serve. And I thank the City Council for appointing me to this position. We look forward to working with you, the community, and the staff of the city of Irving. Thank you very much for being here and thank you for the time for me.
We've got one more. I'm going to ask Dr. Leah Bailey from Irving Heritage Society, board member; Jan Bodnar from Our Library Services; Sandy Hicks from Otis Brown House Mentors, she's our librarian; Ora Guy from the Irving Black Arts Council Board Member; and Jackie Madden, who's the Special Events Supervisor for the City of Irving. All come on down and join me on the stage. You know, we should really do a trivia contest now. Washington Irving masterfully crafted children's stories, essays, histories, biographies, and various works, such as The Legend of Alhambra, The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, Rip Van Winkle from his sketchbook, History of New York, and A Tour on the Prairies, to name just a few. And for all of those competing in the trivia contest, I suggest you know every one of those titles because they will ask. Washington Irving has been recognized as a prolific writer, while mentoring and studying the standards of many other authors. Was a great student of Christopher Columbus, of George Washington as well, and traveled to Spain to study several times. Washington Irving is often referred to as America's first man of letters, though he also represented the United States in master-related positions in Spain and England. From his time of his own, few have traveled more miles, influenced more people, written and witnessed more history or won more friends for himself and his nation than did Washington Irving. Irving, Texas is honored to share the name Irving with this noted and accomplished author, historian, poet, essayist, and diplomat. Many citizens in Irving, Texas are joining together to celebrate the life and works of Washington Irving on the occasion of his 232nd birthday, as well as the history of Irving through exhibits, Google Hangouts, and Irving trivia. Now therefore I, Beth Van Dyne, there in the city of Irving, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as celebrating Irving, the city and the man. Thank you. I just want to encourage all of you to get involved in the celebrating Irving, the city, and the man. And do so through our Google Hangouts that we're doing for the kids this year, through the schools and the historical, cultural places in Irving, as well as this trivia that you kept mentioning. Use it, write questions this year, and submit them to help your team out, or you can even help form a team. Check things out at the Heritage website, www.ervingheritage.com. Join us. Thank you. Now we're going to go ahead and move on to the agenda with our Citizen Forum. City Secretary Shanae Jennings will conduct this Citizen Forum. I ask everyone to please maintain their comments to three minutes.
This Citizen Forum provides the opportunity for our citizens to address the council on items that are not listed on the regular agenda. The council will listen, but they will not respond as they are restricted from deliberation by the Texas Open Meeting Law. If your comments require a response, the follow-up will be handled by the communications team. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments. Professional presentation is requested with no personal or political comments made. Our first speaker is Kim Morris, followed by Crystal Mayne.
Good evening. My name is Kim Morris, 2643 Intraide Boulevard, Irving, Texas, 75038. I am a member of the Irving, Texas Democratic Women, and I'm here to comment on the resolution voted taken by this city council concerning House Bill 562 protecting against foreign laws. I first wanted to thank Councilmen Dej, Webb, Mager, and Putnam, there you are, for voting against this resolution. This evening, there's association of various secular, religious, and political groups who have come together to let you know that not all of Irving agrees with those of you who voted for this. What were you really all thinking? Of the hundreds of bills filed during this legislative session, this city government chose the prevention of foreign laws in our state as the most important concern of Irving? It did not cautionize that Irving citizens may have benefited from a resolution about healthcare, full funding of our schools, voting issues, even more funding for the infrastructure? But no, this city decided to chant in a bill which did nothing but breed fear and divide the community. Again, what were you all thinking? You have been referred to as bigots and put in the same category as Indiana. It is no longer just the city government. It is the mayor who is ruling.
Please, please, be respectful.
And it's a mayor being used, and it has tainted the entire city. The press is wondering why a small town mayor would do this in a government of our size, and also why the mayor would take her Facebook page further explaining the vote mentioning the concern about one religion that has tributes, and that one religion is Islam. The vote attempts to marginalize a religion and the people of this faith who are your constituents and taxpayers. Again, what were you thinking? I received numerous calls after I started organizing a response to this vote. These calls were from people with more moderate views that who felt we should just let this go since the resolution does nothing really. I think that is very short sighted, and this is the larger picture. If this council can focus in on one group, then who is next? While you all lay groundwork up here for future elections writing people about Muslims, then who will be next? This fan population, after all, the people in Austin are trying to weaponize our borders. Did you miss that vote? From all of this, I have to thank you all, though. I could never have met some of the churches, temples, synagogues, and mosques in our metroplex thanks to this vote. Our association will be long lasting. Community efforts will bring us together in the future. And being part of a political organization, I always look forward to future elections in my community with new friends and associates of like mine. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We're all in the standing room. And let's show some decorum. There's a lot of people here with disparate views. Let's please be very respectful of those views.
Crystal Mayne, and then Evelyn Smart, please be ready.
My name is Crystal Mayne, and I just wanted to thank those of you who did vote in favor of the resolution last week. It seemed redundant, and yet it seems necessary to pass that law for American laws for American courts. That should go without saying. The votes who are against that, why would they be against it? If they're following American laws anyway, then that law won't bother them. It won't have any effect on them.
We question the waters. What?
If it doesn't bother you, then let it roll off your back and go on. If it affects you, then you should be concerned. But the thing is, American laws should always take precedence. I just wanted to thank you again for passing the resolution last week. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn Smart, followed by Gillian Walker. Please refrain from screaming in the audience. Forward here.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Smart. I live at 1000 Share Lane, Irving, Texas, 75060. I only come for you to thank Congressmen Putnam, Webb, Mager, for their great back for knowing that your decisions do not come from a place of bigotry and fear. It's not real clear to me which comes first, bigotry or fear? But they both seem to end up in the same place, and that's hatred. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, the question is no longer why. The question is, what are we going to do to fix this mess? Thank you very much.
Gillian Walker, followed by Bob Sheeks.
Good evening. I'm hoping I'm not going to look up. I've got to read fast. I don't have 3 and 1/2 minutes here. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gillian Walker. I live at 1512 Van Drive here in the city. My late husband's family settled in Irving in 1930.
We might want to do the lighter cut down.
I have seen many changes over the years. Our children and grandchildren were born and raised here. We had a very popular and successful business for almost three decades. We served the citizens here. I have loved this town for all the fond memories we have had with family, friends, and clients. We have met new families, but we're remembering the old families that came and settled here as a farming community, what's left of them. I dream of heaven here, but right now, right here, I have lived in hell, and I can't take it anymore without speaking out. Last time I spoke and asked for help, I was not successful and did not move me. For me, it might make things worse. I am again here addressing the problem we have with the bullying of the police department and the drugs. Our hearts aren't made to hurt, they're made to love. You have continued to sit up there in your power seats and your money seats with your power guns and not make an effort to address the continuous problem. You speak no evil, you see no evil, and you hear no evil. But evil is here, and you choose to ignore it. You choose to turn your back on the city's people. You choose to pretend we don't have a problem. All along, it's growing even larger. The Bible warns us about money and greed. From my past experience, when I complained to the Internal Affairs about an officer's conduct, the very officer I complained complained about investigated pink his own complaint? And guess what? They did not know him. My family and others have been personally attacked, scared, and bullied by the police. They have not served and protected us. They've botched investigations, not only to the death of one of my employees of one of the business properties that I own, but into the death of my brother, and now the death in cause of my precious grandson. Is this justice for us and other victims here in America, in Irving? One department's legal representative has been rotting toe one lie after another. Does he think that we are stupid and can't read? Or maybe he has a memory problem, or just a heart that does not seem to care?
So I'm sorry, we specifically said no personal attacks?
I didn't. I didn't say that personally.
You didn't say anything, but the personal attacks are against the entire department. Have you got issues?
I have tried to meet behind both. I'm going home. I find it a bit boring learning. I have tried to meet behind both closed doors, and I've only been stuck with my mind.
Ms. Walker, three minutes is up.
Thank you very much.
I'm here for others whose hearts are burning.
Ms. Walker, please take a seat.
I carry with me.
Okay, I'm sorry, who's the next speaker?
Bob Sheeks, followed by Paris Bacall.
My name is Bob Sheeks, and I live at 1914 Lock Island Road, 75306. I'd also like to talk about the vote last time.
I'm going to stop right there. I know we can keep popping up and down to show which side we're on. I think it'd be much better if everybody who's not a speaker please just remain in your seats. Again, let's just be respectful. If you are up at the podium, sir, 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 we are trying to be respectful, and you're standing in front of other people. You're welcome if you'd like to stand. There's others standing remotely there, but you are blocking the way of other people speaking. Mr. Sheeks, I'm sorry. Please continue.
House Bill 562. I think that the issue of religious strife, fear, is one that's been around at least several millennia. But for our residents of Texas, first I should say that I was a student at Midwestern Baptist Theological Seminary in Kansas City. At that time, there were 13 million, 13.6 million Baptists in the United States, Southern Baptists. Over 10 million of them lived in Texas. So that's why I'm talking about Baptist history. In my Professor of Church History's class, Lake Uwong, we learned that the first English-speaking, the first London, first English Baptist church was founded in London in 1607 by two men, John Smith and Thomas Helwes. And a distinctive principle of Baptist thinking was religious liberty, freedom of conscience. Thomas Helwes, one of the founders of the first English Baptist church, died in prison in 1660 for supporting this proposition at the hands of King James I, the guy that sponsored Irving, under whose auspices the King James Version of the Bible was translated. And this guy Helwes was such a radical that he imagined that there could be a government where believers who were Jews and Muslims and Christians could all live together
One minute left.
and follow their own faith without trouble from the government. Since politics is excluded from this conversation, I'll go no further. I just wanted to remember my late professor Hugh Wamboldt and his devotion to freedom of conscience and separation of churches. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Paris Bacall, followed by Barbara Macfield.
Hi there. I'm Paris Bacall. I live at 2809 Udolco, Irving, Texas, 75062. I've been in Irving, Texas since I was four years old. And I'm now 50, so. Mayor, I support you. Thank you. Sharia law has no place in the United States, the state of Texas, or Irving, Texas. We live in a land of freedom, in a land that embraces freedom, while Sharia law is oppressive. Sharia is Islam, and the Islam goal is to immigrate, assimilate, and annihilate. And it all begins with a vote like this opening up. Well, you've already voted.
That is offensive. These are offensive remarks and to promote respect.
Sir.
Your feelings are not mine.
Sir, if you would sign up to speak, sir.
The door to a foreign law, the door, the door to a foreign law.
That took care of the Jews and the Greeks.
We are Americans, and this is a sovereign nation. We already have laws that we have, thanks to the Constitution. Okay, I'm going to all start.
Everyone, we all have very strong views. I appreciate everyone for being here. I want to hear all of you, but we have to maintain decorum and be very professional. I would like to hear from everyone who has signed up to speak. I'm sorry, please.
It all begins with a vote like this, opening the door to foreign law. We are Americans, and this is a sovereign nation. We already have laws in place, and they are based on the Constitution. While I stand by the fact that this country was founded on Judeo-Christian values, this is not about faith. This is about freedom. To the residents who are here, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you have the freedom to be here. But that's what you have right now is freedom. But Sharia destroys that. Thank you.
Robert Maxfield, followed by Gibson Walker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city staff, city council members, and your honor, the mayor. My name is Robert Maxfield, and I've lived in Irving since 1967, except for two years where I owned a business in southern Oklahoma. I moved back to my neighborhood in which I grew up. And when I did, my neighbors came to me and said they had a very large problem in the neighborhood. The neighborhood had a very bad problem of traffic in the Islamic center of Irving. People had problems. They spit on us. They had people parking their yards, verbally abused them, blocked them in, parked in their driveways. So the first thing that I did is I sat there and watched one Friday. And when I watched, it happened. It was a three-ring circus of cars and taxi cabs going through the neighborhood, violating laws. And what they did is they parked in front of the fire hydrants and ran stop signs for, we did this for weeks. I called the police. The police came out, and one day, they gave, or stole 23 tickets. They were torn up, thrown on the ground, and they got in verbal confrontations with the Irving police. So from that point, I went to what I thought was the source of the problem. I went to the Irving City Council and zoned it. And I talked to many of the city councilmen here verbally. I've had dinner with one. I talked to him on the phone. Okay? The problem has gotten better. It's not all the mosque. It's not about Islam. It's about parking in front of fire hydrants and placing disrespect for laws. And that's what the main thing is. And it's not totally solved. It's been a five-year battle to get this solved. It's still happening. Thank you.
We're going to see how this works. Usually, I'm used to talking without a mic. I'm standing before the Irving City Council tonight. I am a neighbor of the city of Irving. I live in Flower Mount. When I heard of the Sharia court in Irving, Texas, I was astonished. I'm standing in front of the Irving City Council, and behind you, I see an American flag, a city of Irving flag, and a Texas flag. And I don't know what that means to you, but I know what it means to me. That is the symbol of our community, our nation, our laws. That is the symbol of our community, our nation, our laws. My family lived in Saudi Arabia for a few years. The way that the women were oppressed over there is unconscionable.